Do now.
Okay, uh, we call the meeting of the Charter Review Committee to order. First, uh, called to order, uh, I think that's supposed to be you, wasn't it? You want to do the roll call?
Yes, sir.
Roper.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Shelton.
Here.
Townsend.
Here.
Ellis.
Here.
Okay, has everybody reviewed the minutes?
Yes.
Yes.
We have any corrections?
Well, about corrections, um, we had a lot more conversation than is reflected in the, uh, minutes, but I don't have a problem with it.
Yeah, can't write.
It's recorded.
Okay, do I have a motion to accept? Have a motion to accept, a second?
Second.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
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 Opposed?
Oh, I'm sorry. Are we supposed to?
Yeah, if you'd like.
Roll each vote, right?
Yeah, let me go ahead and call vote, that way it's, it's on the record. Ellis.
Yes.
Shelton.
Yes.
Roper.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Townsend.
Yes.
Justin, Mike.
Yes.
Justin, I'm still not sure that mic's on. It's gotta be green.
I already made my vote.
Thank you.
Okay, let's start off with visitors, see if we have any public input. Okay, nobody. All right, now to get a report from the city attorney on the committee requests.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Uh, in your packet of materials at your desk, there are two breakout sheets. One on the, uh, change of the word freeholders, one regarding gender references. The first one I'll address would be the, the term freeholders, that's found in section twenty of the charter, uh, where they said that they can provide for the election of a board of freeholders to prepare or propose those amendments to the charter. That term, uh, I know we talked about it a little bit last week. It really, uh, is, was fairly common historically in many state statutes, state constitutions, charters, et cetera. It's also found in the Oklahoma Constitution, Article eighteen, Section three A and three B, under sections of the Constitution allowing a city with more than two thousand residents to frame a charter for its own government, consistent with the sub, with and subject to the Constitution and laws of the state of Oklahoma. I suspect that's where it came from in the City of Yukon Charter. Uh, other states and municipalities who have that term have in recent years starting, started doing away with it because of the, the historical reference that there, that's there. It was outlawed as a name for county level officials in New Jersey, they used, ironically, they used that instead of county commissioners for a long time. And it was outlawed in, uh, twenty twenty-one in favor of the more common title county commissioner like we have here. So, the English Dictionary, Oxford English Dictionary, which is really the origin of that word, discusses the origin of that word. It says technically, any outright owner of land is a freeholder, but the most regular use of the word historically has been in the context of voting rights. Freeholders were those people who owned property worth forty shillings back in England, um, a year, and were thus entitled to vote in county elections at least until the franchise extensions of the nineteenth century. It was thought of as an independent voter exercising his legal rights unconstrained by the lure of political parties or threats. Obviously, in the United States, that began to develop some different connotations because of the, um, prohibitions against who could own land and who could vote. So, it's, to me, this seems like an easy fix, and I've proposed an amendment for section twenty, which is on the, uh, second paragraph of that page. It says, where we substitute the word, the word freeholders with the term City of Yukon residents. So now that section sixty, sixty would read, "The council by ordinance may provide for the election of a board of City of Yukon residents to prepare and propose amendments to this charter. When an amendment proposed by a board of, of City of Yukon residents shall have been submitted by the council at a general election, ratified by a majority of the registered voters, and approved by the governor, it shall go into effect." So basically, it's just a substitution of the historical word freeholder for the more, uh, more, uh, modern term City of Yukon residents. So that's, that's on the first issue that you asked me, I don't know if they're having any discussion on that or concerned about it.
Discussion on that?
I really have no problem with it. It's very definitive.
I move to approve.
Anybody buy it?
Yeah, agreed.
So is the motion made to recommend that, that proposed change to the city council?
Correct.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, Justin, uh, made the motion, and then Chris, um, seconded it right before that, so. All right, so we're going with the, uh, the motion as Roger read. And I'll call roll. Ellis.
Yes.
Roper.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Townsend.
Yes.
Shelton.
Yes.
So the second sheet you have in front of you concerns language using gender-specific references, there was some discussion about that. Um, as you know, the term councilman is found at least sixteen different times throughout the charter, and I've listed the various sections where it's used. The terms he, his, and him are found throughout the charter at least twenty-eight references. That was just through my amateur counting, but section forty-five of the charter does state as follows, uh, section forty-five, feminine gender. "When the masculine gender is used in this charter, it shall also mean the feminine unless the masculine alone is clearly indicated." So, my opinion would be that as written, there is language that makes the inclusive. While some of the statutes, some of the charter provisions still say he or him, there is the language that says it, that includes the feminine. We also, I also noted that some of the more recent charter changes do say his or her, or he or him. So, the options I would see there would be to leave the language alone, letting section forty-five cover all gender-specific references, or adopt an amendment, something along these lines, to say, um, number one, this measure amends the charter of the City of Yukon and amends all affected sections by substituting the gender-neutral term council member for councilman. That would be one ballot question. The other one would be, the, this measure amends the charter of the City of Yukon. It amends all affected sections by substituting the gender-neutral terms he or she for he, his or hers for his, and him or her for him. I do think it's probably important to, to realize that in two thousand twenty-four, there's quite a bit of discussion about pronouns that are used by individuals, and so, um, he or she, I state as gender-neutral, but there may be some pushback from community members who think that it should be more likely he, him, or they, something like, along those lines, uh, when you're dealing with different, different gender pronouns today. Again, that feminine gender in section forty-five attempts to cover all of this. So it's really up to you gentlemen as to whether or not you think we need to make this recommendation, or if you just want to make one of the two. Whatever, I'll leave it up to you and would remain open for questions if you have any.
Any questions?
I don't have questions, have thoughts.
Throw it out there, it's the first time.
Um, I see no reason to change it. The more pronouns we add, the more furor we toss out there for people to feed on. I, based on that, I think, the terminology, it addresses it. Think we should leave it as it is.
My only suggestion would be to maybe add that part where we say council member for councilman.
That's not a bad idea.
That way, nobody.
Council member instead of councilman.
Yes, other than that, I'd say we leave it alone, we just add that small part there. Any other comments? We have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion.
I'd like to second it.
And just for reference, that would be to amend the charter by amending all affected sections by substituting the gender-neutral term council member for councilman.
Yes, that's what counts. The motion I intend to do make.
Okay, I have a motion, uh, by member Smith, and it was seconded by Mr. Roper, correct?
Correct.
Okay, I'll call roll. Townsend.
Yes.
Shelton.
Yes.
Roper.
Yes.
Ellis.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Those are the two items which you tasked me to look at last week.
Fantastic, thank you very much. Question?
Yep.
All right, now what I've done on the final three, I've just taken a general number to put by them so that we can talk about it instead of just maybe reading the whole thing, but proposition about term limits for individuals serving on any board, committee, commission, or authority of the city council, I numbered that one. Have I got that? Okay, uh, shall the City Charter of Yukon be amended to require that any vacancy on the city council, remaining in the line of nine months, filled with a special election? And it also goes to vacancies, uh, on the council, uh, and I label that number two. We've already, what I labeled number three was the, uh, the wording of the charter amendment, which we've already taken care of. That's out, that's done. And number four is basically the creation of, uh, having an election as for a mayor and four wards. And I label that number four. Number five, uh, that's the one about censure of council members, that's number five. Okay, just for no other reason other than to start it memorable, which is to start with one, if anybody has any questions or, uh, comments, love to hear them now. Basically, I don't know, do you guys want me to read it, or you guys know what it is?
I don't, I don't need to read it, but I, I would say that, uh, council vacancies has been pretty solid and upheld throughout many decades. Good, good policy, good procedure, has not created an issue, and as far as I know, at any point in time in the past. I don't know why we're even considering.
Well, this is number, number one's the term limits.
Jerry, uh,
I'm sorry.
The audience doesn't know what you're talking about, can you, can you, can you read it for us?
Okay, now, the, upon calling proposition number one is, shall the City Charter of Yukon, Oklahoma be amended to introduce term limits for individuals serving on any board, committee, commission, or authority established by the city council, mandating that no appointed member may serve more than two total terms of four years each, with partial terms served to fill a vacancy, not counting towards the two-term limit, to ensure governance reflects rotation and diversity of community activities. Also, go to, uh, new section for section seven, which is the same, uh, bill, basically, amendment. Except as otherwise provided in the charter, all powers of the city, including the determination of all matters of policy, shall be vested in the council without limitation of the foregoing. The council may appoint and remove the city manager as provided in this chapter. By ordinance, and, and by ordinance enact municipal legislation, raise revenue, make appropriations, regulate bond elections, issuance of bonds, sinking funds, the refunding of indebtedness, salaries, wages, and all other fiscal affairs of the city, subject to provision of the state constitution and law in this charter. And the four, establish or adopt a pension, retirement, and/or social security system or systems for any or all of the officers, employees, and the servants of the city, except members of the council, either alone or in cooperation with the state or federal government or both. Inquire into the conduct of any office, department, or agency of the city and investigate municipal affairs. Appoint or elect and remove its own subordinates, the members of the personnel board, the members of the planning commission, members of the board of adjustment, and other quasi-legislative, quasi-judicial, or advisory officers and authorities, now or when, and if established, or prescribe the method of appointing or electing and removing them. Any individual elected or appointed to serve on the board, on any board, committee, commission, or authority created by the city council shall be eligible to serve no more than two total terms of four years each. This limitation applies to total terms served rather than consecutive terms. In other words, you get eight years total, whether it's four years now and ten years down the road.
Jerry, my discussion is, my two cents worth is gonna be that I don't think those appointed positions should have a term limit. I think that's where you get a lot of history into Yukon, um, and a lot of knowledge. I, I don't think that, I think as long as it's approved by the council, um, on a fifty-one percent vote, uh, fifty plus one, I, I think that's up to the council decide on a, on a term not, not to be preconditioned.
I understand.
Hundred percent agree.
Okay, let me finish it. Now, count which total term that block. Grant pardons for violations of the charter and ordinances, including the remission of fines and costs upon the recommendation of the municipal judge, which is pretty basic. Uh, regulate elections, the initiative of referendums, and recall within limits prescribed by the state constitution and law in his, this chap, charter, regulate this organization, powers, duties, functions of the municipal court, and of the minor violations bureau, when and if established within the limits prescribed by the state constitution and law in this charter. Okay. Now, the, okay, also, create, change, and abolish all offices, departments, and agencies of the city, other than the offices, departments, and agencies created by this charter, and assign additional powers, duties, and functions to offices, departments, and agencies created by this charter. In the event of a vacancy in the city council where the unexpired term, uh, extends beyond nine months, such vacancy shall be filled by a special election at the next possible election. Considering filing and notice periods, by such election shall not exceed six months from the occupants of the vacancy. During the interim period, the city council may at its discretion appoint an interim council member to serve until the first of the month following the certification of the election. Special election to fill the incomplete term shall be conducted based on a plurality vote, ensuring the citizens of Yukon have a direct voice in sending the representatives on the city council. So, so far, we have, uh, a couple of objections to the, uh, term limits on board members.
If, if I might, Jerry?
Sure.
Um, there's been, there's been a lot of history, as has already been mentioned, through the boards and commissions. Every councilman, as we know, they appoint their cabinet, planning commission, board of adjustments. So if there's a changeover in the council, um, we, and it's a term out, like Donna, for example, we should, this, the subcommittee members should still have an opportunity to serve at the discretion of whoever's replacing that councilman. To just say, just because a councilman is termed out, that somebody who's been doing a wonderful job for ten years, um, has to be removed from a, a commission, um, that sounds like a detriment to me, not a positive. Anybody else have anything to put in?
I have something to add, uh, or to, uh, not propose, but to mention it. I, I, I had talked to, uh, I heard some ideas about that, doing, uh, in, instead of just making the limit to, to four-year terms, they can do two consecutive, take one term off, or have to set out one term, and then they can re-up for, for the position again, it's just an idea. Can I say something?
Sure. Stick your name, please.
Uh, Joe Horn, uh, one oh two South Fifth. You know, like you said, Ken, anybody on any board can be removed at any time by the council member. The term limits seem, seem pointless to me. One thing that, that I think's really important, that, uh, I don't know how many boards we have, uh, there's quite a few. There's five people on each board. Uh, sometimes it's pretty hard to get somebody to run for council, uh, much less sit on one of these boards. Currently, uh, we have somebody, uh, that is, uh, we, we have a vacant seat on my board now. Have had a vacancy for quite a while, uh, uh, unless it's, uh, been filled in, 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 in the period of time that I'm, I'm unaware of. But it can be pretty difficult to fill those seats, uh, and, and you're gonna remove somebody every, every so often just because they've been on a certain period of time, uh, it's, it's pointless, and, and those people can be removed anytime by the council member.
Thank you. Okay, Mike, I'm gonna play, play maybe the other side here for a second, is, and it, you make a lot of sense, they can be removed at any time, which bureaucrats can't. And I'm really kind of, uh, anti-bureaucrat when it comes to how many of you guys have been in off, or have been running certain divisions in the federal and state, and we can't ever get rid of, and they make the rules and laws, but this is totally different, you're right. It, I appreciate that insight, so.
Well, in, in reality, Jerry, there's only two decision-making bodies in Yukon City Government. So, I mean.
Yeah, anytime a board makes a recommendation, it has to be approved by the council. So.
Right, but Board of Adjustments, for example, that's a decision-making body, or a body.
Well.
So, um, like, I'm not, I'm not sure if.
The Board of Adjustments is not a, uh, a recommendation, a regulatory.
Right.
Their decision is final, it doesn't go to the council.
Or does?
No, so, that, that's the only, if we were gonna toss one, uh, Board of Adjustments would be the only one, but the problem in my mind with that is that kind of experience is not something you just
Right.
get rid of. Uh, Board of Adjustments, um, conditional use permits, yeah, well, you know, I don't need to tell you.
I knew it was appointed, I didn't know they didn't report to the council though.
No.
Okay, uh, I, I really don't have a problem with the proposals we have here of, I, I'd rather just leave it like it is than add anything else to it.
Are you prepared for a motion?
Yes, sir.
Um, I'd like to move that no changes are made, as far as the term limit section goes.
I'll second it.
We have motion and second.
Okay, motion for no changes to the term limits for boards and commissions, I'll call. That was, uh, motion made by Mr. Smith and seconded by Mr. Townsend. All right, I'll call the vote. Townsend.
Yes.
Shelton.
Yes.
Ellis.
Yes.
Roper.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
All right, moving along.
Yeah, sorry, misnumbered your.
It's one, it's one. All right, number two. That is what, I'll read the whole thing, how's that? Shall the City Charter of Yukon, Oklahoma be amended to require that any vacancy on the city council where the remaining term exceeds nine months, shall be filled by a special election at the next possible opportunity within nine months, accounting for filing and notice periods, and allow the city council the option, but not the obligation, to appoint and interim member until the special election results are certified, with the election conducted using a plurality vote. Amendment details. Okay, this is, uh, "In the event of any vacancy in the city council where the remaining unexpired term extends beyond nine months, such vacancy shall be filled by a special, special election at the next possible election, considering filing, notice periods, but such election shall not exceed six months from the occurrence of the vacancy. During the interim period, the city council may at its discretion appoint an interim council member to serve until the first of the month following the certification of the election results. Special election to fill the incomplete term shall be conducted based on a plurality vote, ensuring the citizens of Yukon have a direct voice in selecting the representatives on the city council."
Jerry, I think I'm gonna, I'll start off, and I think Ken would, would back me on this. I don't think there's ever been a problem with this. I don't foresee a problem, and I think if you did see a problem with it, I think the proposal, the, what's in place now would, would effectively choose that person.
I'd like to ask a member from the city, is there, figure this is a problem, or could be a problem, or is not a problem?
We recently had, uh, one last fall, I believe, um, and the council, I mean, I don't, we didn't have any issues. They, they appointed a member in that ward to serve out that term.
And it's voted on by the entire council?
Yes.
That's from council.
Well, and.
Now, the change. Councilman Gilliland resigned. Well, I, what I understand.
We had an exact same situation with, uh, Mr. Opitz and Ms. Yanda.
Right.
Quite successful, ten and a half year term.
Sure.
Turned out, I mean, I, I just, again, I know we need to be here, and I know we need to discuss this, but it, some of the things that we're discussing just doesn't seem reasonable to me.
I think the only change, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Reinhardt, is it gives them six to nine months, is that correct? We changed it from, or it would be changing it from, uh, in, okay, remaining unexpired term beyond nine months, and the election shall not exceed six months from the occurrence of the vacancy. That's the only difference I saw.
I believe that's correct, I don't have the document that you're reading that off of, is that something you prepared, or what?
No, this is what we got in our packet on resolutions.
It's taken it from nine months to a six to nine months.
Okay.
A maximum nine months.
Oh.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't have a hard opinion either way.
I don't see how it, it helps us.
As long as, I mean, the ones that would have the problem with that, I think, would be the city, because they couldn't get business done with somebody.
They're still appointing somebody, they're still appointing somebody.
It's not like they're gonna wait nine months to appoint somebody, they're gonna appoint somebody to serve when the, when the seat becomes available, or open.
Yeah, we did have.
And that, and that would be for that six or nine month period of time for a special election.
Eisenhower in my last term, it's maybe, so.
Right, so I.
I don't see a problem, but.
If you're talking about Eisenhower, that was way before I was born, Jerry.
Jason, I do have a question. How long, how long does it generally take to organize a special election?
So I have the actual election, um, one moment, let me grab that. So we have the twenty twenty-four election calendar from the state, and for example, if you want to do a special election on January, if you wanted to do it on, uh, January ninth of twenty twenty-four, the resolution would have been due sixty days before, so November ninth. So most of them are gonna be the sixty days. Ours, that we're planning on any changes we want to do, since it's the, uh, general election, um, that one is seventy-five days.
I will say this, your charter is designed to avoid vacancies in office. They want it, they want, um, when someone, when your successor fails to qualify, if your successor, a council member's successor can't be there to be sworn in, then, which we had that situation this year, the, the existing council member continues to serve until the new person qualifies. And so, the whole idea is that you have a full slate of officers to run the bu, business of the city.
Okay. Well, again, all I'm seeing is that it's making the council have an election within six months. What if that doesn't cor, correlate with general election?
That could be problematic for you.
It'd cost the city money to run an election.
Absolutely. I, I think, I see what you're saying, but that's on the six month, you're talking about a six month?
Yeah, if, if we, and I know, I read it.
Are you talking about nine months?
No, I'm talking about they, right now it's at nine months, they have to do something.
Within nine months?
Within nine months, yeah, not nine months. But now it's saying, it almost has to say you have to, uh, uh, special fill, might be, uh, next possible election, not to exceed six months. So what if we have an election, it's gonna be nine months?
Well, we wouldn't, if it typically takes sixty to seventy-five days to organize a special election, and we have six months to make that happen, or nine months to make that happen, um, generally speaking, in nine months, there's gonna be. Generally speaking, in nine months, there's gonna be an election. Right, so just because this situation occurs doesn't mean that the city has to pay for a special election necessarily.
Well, there's all, the council may, we know we have them every year, there's gonna be an election in November. That's a general election. And are the, uh. The council, council election is a general election, correct?
Not necessarily. That's just a.
You'll have a minimum of two elections.
Elections in November, that's what we're referring to.
You'll also have county and city always in, what, February?
Would that count as a general election?
Yeah, it's an election.
So according to the states, uh, most, it's they're called primary elections, special elections. The general election, it looks like the only actual general election is, at least for twenty twenty four, is November. They have some runoff primaries, special election, proposition elections, um, so most of those. Yeah, the only actual general election is November. According in twenty twenty four.
Okay, any of the other elections outside of the general election, a council election could be. Back, uh, piggybacked on one of those elections?
Yes, it it can be, most of the, sometimes we've, um, so it does, our, um, our election is set, it's, um. It's either February, March, I I I forget which one it is, but it is set in the, in setting there, but. Sometimes it'll just be a city, sometimes there may be a school board, a school board on there. And there may be another, um, special proposition or something like that, but, so it could be we are the only ones. And it could be that there's some others, and we, how that works is if we're the only one, the city's paying the full cost of that election. If there's another, uh, if there's a school election or a county election or something like that, then they split it based on the precinct. So then we would be sharing some of the cost. And then our runoff is usually, uh, I believe in April, if we have to have a runoff for a council.
Anybody else have anything to say or make a motion or? Any idea what you wanna do?
I don't, again, I don't see why we're doing anything of this particular topic. Um, I appreciate, you know, the discussion that we're having, because we need to have it apparently, charter's getting maybe antiquated. I don't necessarily see it that way, but others do, and that's why we're here, right?
Right. Well, uh. I'm hoping for a motion. Yes. I move no changes. Do I have a second?
I second.
Call for vote, we got.
Okay, so this is for I, the item number two on the list regarding council vacancies and the motion. And the second is no change. And it was Mr. Roper, you seconded that?
Correct.
Correct, okay. Okay, we'll do roll call, Smith.
Yes.
Shelton.
Yes.
Townsend.
Yes.
Roper.
Yes.
Ellis.
Yes.
Okay, now this one probably gonna take some discussion.
I think I know what number three is.
Number four. Three we were.
Four, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay. Proposition four, well, I'm calling it four, it's going to have a different number. Uh, is basically wanting to, okay, I'll just read it, shall the city charter of Yukon, Oklahoma be amended to designate the at-large city council member. Elected during the next regularly scheduled or special election as mayor, serving a four-year term to enhance the reputation and stability of the city's government. Now, here's the amendment. The city shall be divided into four wards as nearly equal in population as practical. There shall be a member, a council of five members, which shall consist of councilperson at large, who will serve as mayor. And one councilperson from each of the four wards of the city, as the wards are constituted in this charter. Or as they may hereafter be constituted from time to time by ordinance. Only registered voters of the city shall be qualified for the offices of council members. And council members from the ward shall also be registered voters of their respective wards at the time of their election. A change in ward boundaries shall not disqualify a councilperson from completing the term for which he was elected. However, removal of a councilperson from one ward to another after his election shall disqualify him from office. No councilperson may hold any office or position in the city government by appointment by the city manager. The councilperson elected at large shall assume the office of mayor and shall fulfill all duties or responsibilities ascribed to the mayor by this charter. We've discussed this for years, and I've always been in favor of having an elected mayor. I just think it gives, I don't know, more of a, they're not gonna have any more. It probably gonna give more responsibilities and duties, but it's not gonna give them any more of a vote, they're not getting two votes, they're still only get one vote on the council. I just think it would be a better, uh, from my opinion, just a better way to do it. And still have the four wards and each, there'll be that one at large, which the entire city votes for. And each ward will vote for their person that matter, their category when their terms up.
That, that to me just sounds like promoting our city manager to mayor. Yeah, except for, okay, let's face.
I know you've got.
Jerry, let's face it.
City manager can't be promoted, he's hired.
No, I understand, now. Every election, city election or otherwise, every election is a popularity contest. No people in town like you, Jerry, and no disrespect, or like me, and we could get enough votes for the at-large seat. We would then be running the city of Yukon.
Nope.
That's exactly what they're talking about.
No, it's not.
Okay, clarify, clarify for me.
The charter says, and we just read part of it, city manager runs the day-to-day business of the city.
Yes.
We're not giving the mayor any more powers, it's just the way they're elected. No more powers, period. And that's why I believe it should have been that way twenty years ago, thirty years ago, but it wasn't, and that's fine, I mean. This is a change, in my opinion, I'd like to see made, no more powers, read, you know, it doesn't give them anything else. They're more of a figurehead than what.
Well, that's what our charter calls for now, refers to it as a figurehead.
Okay, however, let me make another point, the mayor represents the entire city, right?
Should it?
Okay.
And regardless of what ward they come from.
Now we're making the the mayor elected by the entire city of Yukon, not just from ward one or two, three, four, five. I always found it, i- i- it's still a popularity contest, I mean, when I got to be mayor, I had to have two more votes. And after my, after one of the guys got beat, I had my votes. It's a popularity contest, but I want the mayor to represent the entire city, and every citizen will vote for the mayor.
Um, and not eliminate the city manager position, is that what you're saying?
No, city manager stays the same, not then this proposition changes anything. Other than the election of a mayor.
Ken, let me ask you a question, how how do you, how do you, how are you bringing in the conversation with city manager to mayor?
Well, because, uh, um, the way I understood that, as I read it, even from the very beginning, nineteen sixty one, when, when it was adopted. Well, A, it took four fifths to remove the clerk, the whatever the three positions were. My impression through reading was that the authority of operating the city on a day-to-day basis. Was gonna be run through the mayor's office if we amend this.
No.
Well, how do you say?
Oh, I would have a problem, I would have a problem with that if if what you said, I would have a problem with that. I I think city government should run through city manager, period.
Well, the day-to-day stuff, absolutely, absolutely, and and the city manager works at the discretion of the council, the city council, period.
How I, how do you, how did you take that, I, from what Jerry has or what you have? Cause I did not read it that way, but I want to make sure that if it, that the way that I vote reflects not what you're saying. So where are you guys, where are you, either Ken or Jerry?
Same, I read the same material Jerry did.
Mr. Reinhardt, will this give the the mayor any more duties or responsibilities other than what the charter does now?
Not, not as I read it, you're just, you're just, uh, discussing amending the way in which the mayor is chosen. At at essentially substituting the mayor position for the at-large council position. The section five, the second paragraph of the charter says, the mayor shall preside at meetings of the council and shall certify to the correct. Enrollment of all ordinances and resolutions passed by it. He's recognized as the head of the city government for all ceremonial purposes by the governor for purposes of military law. He has no regular administrative duties, except he shall sign such written obligations of the city as the council may require. He has all the cap- powers of a councilman, he or she does, but no, no administrative powers beyond that.
And in in this amendment that's being presented changes none of that.
As as I understand it and have read it, it appears to be, to me, to just be having the mayor elected at large. Versus being nominated and elected from amongst the council members.
Okay, I, and then I, that brings on another question for me then.
I did wanna point out that back in two thousand, what year was that, two thousand two, I think? That this was proposed as one of the multiple, they had, uh, ten different things that went before, and they had a measure that said. Amending the charter of the city of Yukon to provide the position of mayor shall be filled by the duly elected qualified councilman at large. And that measure failed at that time, but that, I don't know what the public publicity was done at the time, but that was back in two thousand two.
So what's the advantage to us? If we, if, for for example, we we accept the amendment, what's the advantage to the city overall?
That the mayor's representative have voted for every citizen of the city of Yukon. And it just gives it gives it a little bit more of a.
But if nothing changes, the mayor only has one vote now, I mean, is it? I I don't understand why.
It's just what he's elected. And I'm gonna make a motion that we approve that proposition to go to the council for a vote, uh, as written. Second. Still up for discussion, right?
No, once we vote.
Uh, we should still have discussion after we have a motion, motion and second.
There's a motion and second, you can still have discussion, absolutely.
Why did you all, two mayors sitting on this committee, why was, why is it now two thousand twenty four that we're bringing this up?
Well, it was brought up previously, it was brought up previously and failed.
And they failed again. You know, I sit at an at-large position, and I totally see what your point, Jerry, of being. What is an, what is an at-large position? Okay, at-large means the whole city votes for you. And I see that as, like, most municipalities would be, that would be the mayorship. Most municipalities are that way, I came from one that wasn't, and they just rotated and it became, uh. Well, I won't go into that, but it became incestual, if you will, um, not in the physical term. So I I see, it it kind of. Makes that at-large pitch position a true position of what you're voting for, because I, I'll go out to. To my community and they say, what the, why is there an at-large if it's the same, everybody has the same vote, there's only five on the, on the council. Everybody has that same one vote, but what is the at-large, it just kinda, it misrepresents itself unless it is that. Mayorship, that one that we can all vote for, I don't think everybody should vote for one council member, if you will.
Can't.
They do now.
No, each ward has to vote for its own guy.
Not at the at, at-large position.
No, everybody votes, yeah.
At large, yeah, everybody votes at large. At large, but it doesn't, it ju- it it just, it's, I think it's kinda misleading. And I I like the the proposal that you made, that's why I second it, um, to make that at-large mean something, still one vote. And and like I asked you earlier of being a representative of the management. I would, I would totally not entertain that idea.
And that's actually the clarification that I needed, because that, in all, it it just sounded like. If the at-large position, at-large councilman was elected as mayor. Without the city manager, then any doof that could get enough votes could be running our city, that's clarification that I needed.
Sure, with you. Any other discussion? Call for vote?
Mr. Chairman, do you mind, um, reading your, the actual language one more time?
Yes, the amended language is. The city shall be divided into four wards as nearly equal in population as practicable. There shall be a council of five members, which shall consist of a councilperson at large, who shall serve as mayor. And one councilperson from each of the four wards of the city, as the wards are constituted in this charter. Or as they may hereafter be constituted from time to time by ordinance. Only registered voters of the city shall be qualified for the offices of council members. And council members from the ward shall also be registered voters of the respective wards at the time of their election. A change in ward boundary shall not disqualify a councilperson from completing the term for which they were elected. However, removal of a councilperson from one ward to another after his election shall disqualify him from office. In other words, if they move from one ward to the other during, while they had, uh, while they are elected. No councilperson may hold any office or position in the city government by appointment by the city manager. The councilperson elected at large shall assume the office of mayor and shall fulfill the duties, responsibilities ascribed to the mayor by this charter.
And says nothing in that entire paragraph about having one vote or gaining no authority or other council members being subordinates to that. At-large position.
Correct.
Don't you think that's, those are a couple of items that we.
And I said, no, because it talks about it being the, uh, uh, as the charter now. We're going by what the charter says right now, we're not changing that part of the charter, only doing, only doing is we're electing a mayor.
That's all in section four, section five is where the language appears, it says, the mayor shall provide at meetings of the council and shall certify the correct enrollment of.
Which is ceremonial. Is the ceremonial position still part of the language?
Yes, it says, he shall be recognized as the head of government for all ceremonial purposes. There, the first paragraph of five does talk about, um, election of a mayor from amongst the council members. So section five would also have to be amended to strike that language. If section four was amended to include the language about the election at large.
Right. Any other discussion?
So, yeah, so what what I might suggest is. You could vote on the concept and let me bring something back to you, much like I did today. That specifies which specific, and I could show you the strikeouts and all those things, it'd be more more specific, if that's okay?
Do do we have to make a vote before we get that?
No, you can, no.
Table it until.
You can direct me to do that, like you, like you did at the last meeting on the two items I brought today.
I rescind my motion to have a vote.
Okay.
And direct, uh, the attorney to draft that language and bring it back at the next meeting.
Is that a motion, cause I'll second that.
Including section five, right?
Yes, including sections four and five, and you might say any other provisions dealing with the election of the mayor.
Yes, correct, I have a motion.
Thank you.
That, okay, if that's a motion, I'll second it.
Okay, so we have a motion to direct the city attorney to, uh, to work on the language about the mayor being the at-large position. And he'll bring back the proposed language for a vote at the next meeting. Okay, and so we have, uh, Mr. Chairman Shelton made the motion and Mr. Smith seconded that, so we'll call the vote. Ellis.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Roper.
Yes.
Shelton.
Yes.
Townsend.
Yes.
Thank you, gentlemen, I I think it's important that we know what we're voting on, have that specific language, so you can make a good recommendation to council, so.
Well, especially that, that was, that's.
That's a really important matter, so.
Yeah, it's an important matter, and this next one probably is too, so, we'll have to do that. And. Now, the, remember, these are just suggestions given to us, none of us made these up. So, don't, don't get on me about this, heck it. Okay, this is what I call number five, and, uh, basically it says, okay. basically it says, okay, what we have now, I believe is this, "Shall the city charter of Yukon, Oklahoma be amended to introduce new section, a new section establishing a formal censure process for city council members requiring a two-thirds majority vote of the council for censure to address actions or behaviors by council members supported by written documentation or evidence that significantly undermine public trust or the integrity of the city's governance with this amendment taking effect immediately on its adoption, adoption." Article two, section twenty. "In the city of Yukon, Oklahoma, to preserve the dignity and integrity of its city council and to ensure that all members adhere to the highest standards of ethical conduct in public service, the following censure process is hereby established. Authority for censure. The city council shall have the authority to formally censure any of its members for the conduct deemed to be in violation of its prescribed ethical standards or for actions that undermine the public trust or the effective operation of the city council. Grounds for censure. Grounds for censure may include, but are not limited to, behavior that is inconsistent with the official duties and responsibilities of a council member, violations of local, state, or federal law that impact the member's ability to serve effectively, or any actions that bring disrepute upon the council or the city of Yukon. Censure procedure. As any member of the city council may propose a motion for censure against another member provided such motion is supported by written documentation or evidence substantiating the grounds for censure. Upon the introduction of a censure motion, the city council shall schedule a hearing to allow for the presentation of evidence and for the member subject to censure, subject to censure to respond to the allegations. Following the hearing, the city council shall deliberate and vote on the motion for censure. A minimum of two-thirds of all council members must vote in favor of the censure for it to be adopted. While censure does not remove a council member from office, it serves the formal reprimand and public record of the council's disapproval of the member's conduct." Uh, one legal question. We have on this all the time, two-thirds. Shouldn't it be three-fifths since we have five members? Or does it matter? Not if you had a quorum, I think that's. Not if you had a quorum, I think that's part of the discussion. Correct?
Right.
Okay. Still have to have three votes. All right, gentlemen.
I think one hundred percent there needs to be an avenue for censure. Hadn't been that many years ago that I tried to get a code of conduct passed for our council members, couldn't even get a second from the other council members. So I'm to my, to my core, I believe that we, not we, but council members, elected members representing the city of Yukon are and should be held to a higher standard. There has to be a uniform manner if someone deserves a censure for the city council to handle that censure. Now, we'll say this. Just to get it on the agenda, okay? Uh, right now, the mayor is the only councilman, if I understand this correctly, correct me if I'm wrong, that can get something on the agenda by themselves. Every other agenda item has to be, has to have two councilmembers agreeing that they want it on the agenda in order to get it on the agenda. Am I accurate? It is correct. So I'm, I'm, I don't think this should be any different. Just to get it on the agenda, there should be at least two councilmembers.
I agree with that. Hundred percent. That's my proposal, it's gonna be a two. And back in my day, anybody could bring up, any councilmember could bring up something for the charter, the agenda.
Yeah, but if, let, let's say we're, we're councilmen and, and I got angry at you for some reason. For me to be able to get something like a censure on
I got you.
On the agenda by myself, that, that would be inappropriate. That wouldn't be
That's what I'm afraid, that's what I was afraid of.
So, I think if we're gonna, if we're gonna consider that, that that, that language should be added, should take
Two.
Two councilmen to be able to get it on the agenda. And then if they get the votes, they get the votes. If they don't get the votes, they don't get the votes.
And it still doesn't, that nobody will be removed from office, it's just a censure.
Right.
Can I ask how, how this, uh, this proposal varies from what we have now?
Well, there wasn't a censure. There's never been a censure.
Well, yeah, we, we just had a council censured, so what procedure did they file?
It's the same, it's two-thirds vote. Okay, I got you. Exact same.
But how did it get on the agenda?
The mayor wanted it on the agenda.
Okay, so one, oh, and the mayor can get it on the agenda themselves. They, they are the only ones on the council, at least at this.
I assume. I don't know, but I assume.
That's the, my understanding of how that worked.
Okay. You do have censure. It's two-thirds majority of the city council.
So how does?
Well, there's no, uh.
How does this vary from that?
How does this different, differ from, uh, from what we have in place now?
Well, I think it sets, the way I read it again is it sets the grounds for censure. So you just can't say, I don't like the guy, I want to get him censured. It, it sets, uh, now, correct me guys if I'm wrong over here, it also sets a procedure.
It's, so I, I think what you said at the beginning, um, it's, there's nothing in the charter right now about it. So this would be, this would be addressing it. So there's nothing in the charter.
That brings up more questions.
There's, there's nothing in the charter that says anything about, about a censor, however, we just censored somebody.
Right.
But that, that was due to state law?
Yeah, I mean, it's generally recognized, generally recognized procedure in meetings that a body can censure. It's basically a slap on the wrist. And so the, the charter didn't say you can do it or you can't do it. So I think having a policy about how you do it is a good idea. I mean, from a legal standpoint.
So was it state, state, uh, law then, as Joe's asking it? I, I guess maybe I'm, I'm going down a rabbit hole, but the councilman that was just censored, was he censured based on state law since we don't have local ordinance?
Yes, I mean, I, I'll have to get back to you on the, on the specifics of it, but he was, it was done under general meeting regu, regulations. Pub, public bodies have the ability to do that. But we didn't set it out in charter as to how we would do it or how it could be done here.
Right. So this basically gives us a la, a, a roadmap on how to censure, how, what the grounds are, and, and what the effects are. And it puts it in the charter so we can't be, it can't be changed every week or every council can't change the rules.
We have had a councilman censored, uh, uh, before, prior to, to this last censor. And I assume that, that fell under the same guidelines as.
That would have been before my tenure, I don't, I don't know.
Okay. I'm very sensitive in changing our charter. Our charter was done by, by, uh, years ago by people that weren't, uh, that had no special interest. Their, their, uh, it's, 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 it's done and in the past and if, if we're, we're changing things and I like, Ken, uh, uh, what you've, what you've done on a couple of previous, no changes. I, I like that. I'm, I, I fear change and, and, um, I, I just, I just appreciate, uh, you being very, uh, very thoughtful about this process. You're right, we need, uh, we need a process so that, that it can't be a personality conflict and, and it should be done properly within, within guidelines, so. I'm, I'm sensitive. If, if you're not sure, uh, uh, if you should change it, don't change it, but.
And I know I'm not supposed to talk to.
I'm calling your wife.
I hope she's watching.
I hope she's not watching. Mike Burris, three hundred East Flat Drive. In the last censure that took place, and, and this goes to what you read. You're talking about there being evidence. You're talking about there being documentation. This is a good thing because, I mean, last time there wasn't evidence. There wasn't documentation. There was actually a guy who stood up and went, hey, this is not true. That was a member, and it had to do with negotiations too, which I've got a whole issue with. Cause I don't think that the council, the council in other cities for years has been able to go to walk by a fireman and say, how's negotiation go? And they said, good or bad, and they went on. It's negotiation away from the table that I've been told and Mr. Reinhardt could tell us if I'm speaking correctly. Negotiation away from the table that's, that's illegal, that's inappropriate. So if somebody just goes, how's it going, it's not inappropriate, so. But, but this idea of evidence, that, how can you not support? I mean, that would be great. We should have to have, this is America, have somebody stand up and hear the charges against them, see the evidence presented and be able to address it.
Yeah, thank you. So we really. Go ahead.
Yes.
So, overall, I mean, I think based on what we've discussed, it sounds like we kinda understand what the changes are with maybe some verbiage.
Just we're gonna change it. It takes at least two councilmembers to.
To get it on the agenda. And I like, I like the procedure, the way, the way it's laid out. As you said, it gives give someone an opportunity to defend themselves. Yeah. So do we then just?
I have, I have one more. It's the second sentence in that.
Okay.
Um, the first sentence says that, that it takes two or the, or the mayor to put it on the agenda. The next one is, and I'm, I'm with Joe on, I don't like changes, but I also am a, agree with the second community member that spoke of, to keep checks and balances. So we have elected these people, our councilmembers in place. I think censorship, I, and the way that I took this as coming, as one of our, um, goals to look at is I don't think censorship should be so easy. So the second sentence says, um, two-thirds vote, um, which is a quorum. I think you, you need to at least be three-fifths, if not four-fifths, maybe not four-fifths, that may be a bit, a little strengthy. But at least get some kind of bite in there because I think censorship is, that's a hard freaking thing to, I mean, that's putting a stamp down. And I, I think to do that should. It's not really censorship, it's basically, censure is different than censorship. Well, I know what it's censure. You know, we don't approve of what you did, we're putting it in the record. I don't think it should come as easy for the people that we have voted on. The people vote for these people. So let's say that, for instance, if I run for some, if I run for council and I'm standing up for the people that are in my, my constituents and I'm gonna stand firm and tall for that, I think there ought to be more bite to me not to say what my constituents want rather than just three-fifths. Or, excuse me, two-thirds.
Yeah, I, I wouldn't be opposed. As a matter of fact, the four-fifths language in, in our charter is actually used in section sixty-three.
What is that?
Fourth paragraph. Uh, it's when, when they initiated nineteen sixty-one, I think it was, uh, so when it, the charter actually took effect that, uh, if one of the appointed positions, the clerk, the, uh, that it would take four-fifths vote of the council for them to be removed and replaced.
I, I'm cool with that. I, that's what I think it should be. I think it should have kind of like what Joe said, if somebody comes up with an agenda, they can still carry that with two-thirds vote. On the opposite side of what you were trying to go to, the opposite side is if you come in with an agenda that doesn't make any sense, it's.
Well, here, here's, here's the only problem I see with that. Here's the only problem I see with that. There's five councilmen. One of those councilmen.
Is that person?
Is that person.
Yeah.
Uh, we know that's a no vote. Right? So it'd have to be unanimous amongst all other councilmen for the censure to take place.
Do you think?
I think that's much. I think that's a bit much.
Okay. I, I would, I would like three, three-fifths instead of two-thirds though.
I would too. I would too. That, that way you know, everyone on the council would have to be at that meeting in order for it to take place.
That's what I asked the very first time. I, I'm. Three-fifths. I like that. Okay, so now we need to refer that to you and bring it back to us for a vote?
I can do that. I need a little bit of clarification. There was discussion about adoption of a censure process requiring a two-thirds vote initially, but now we're saying three-fifths.
Three-fifths, yeah.
And were you in agreement with that kind of everything else that was read out loud?
I, I am. I think that the format's, the format's good. It gives us a, a direction and a something in place that hopefully it never happens again, but if it does happen again, we've got a procedure in place.
Okay. So Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, I'd like to get a copy of that, what you read. For the, that way Roger and I can have that and that's what we can work off of.
And so on these things that you've directed me to, I'll bring them back in a similar format to what I had on the other two items tonight so that we can vet them out and go through and see it in writing.
Okay.
So they need, is there a motion?
Do we have a, who, who made the motion? Did we have a motion?
A motion to.
I think there was a motion in a second because you said we can have continued discussion.
But it wasn't to approve this?
No, it was to send it to review.
To, for review, okay. So I'll, I'll.
Okay.
So we haven't had a vote yet, so let's have a vote on that and then I'll do it.
So Mr. Chairman, you made the motion and who seconded it?
Justin.
Okay, Mr. Ellis, okay. All right. We'll call the vote. Roper?
Yes.
Townsend?
Yes.
Shelton?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Ellis?
Yes.
Okay, that concludes the five, uh, recommendations that were sent to us to begin with.
Motion to adjourn?
No, not yet. I, I want to give us another week. If you guys have read the charter and have any other proposals that we can bring back next week.
Actually, I have one, if you want to talk about one.
Sure.
Referring back to that four-fifths language. There are three employees of the city council, to my understanding, our city attorney, uh, city judge, city manager.
That's correct.
I believe, is that accurate?
Yes.
I believe that four-fifths needs to be in place before removal of any one of the three city employees. I think that's something that we should discuss maybe in our next meeting.
I, I, I mean, I have no problem with that. I mean, it should, it almost should be unanimous, but again, you get that one guy, it's best friend, the city manager doesn't want that person gone.
But for the, for the same reasons that you wouldn't want a councilman censured with two, two out of five votes essentially, because our language right now is two-thirds, right? That's actually two out of five votes. If.
No, it would still have to be three out of five.
No, it wouldn't.
Two-thirds?
No, not, it says two-thirds. It's to, if you have a quorum, that's three.
It's not the same.
And if two of them, two of the quorum, that says two-thirds. So we shouldn't, I, I just think, just like the censure, it should take more than three councilmen. I think it should be a four-fifths, a supermajority to remove any one of the three council employees.
Why, why, I'm, I'll listen to it, Ken?
Yeah.
And I, I appreciate that and I, um, this is just brought up to me, but I'm gonna be devil's advocate just for a second. I look at the city council as the, the hierarchy of the city. And under them are those three that you just mentioned. Why would you do four-fifths for somebody under the hierarchy and three-fifths for somebody on the hierarchy?
I'm not, I never said anything about three-fifths. I said the censure should be four-fifths.
Oh, I, I thought you said that was too much.
Well, it is too much.
But now you're saying four-fifths is.
Same, no, uh, I'm not trying to parallel the two. Okay, I believe it's two different situations. I understand what you're saying. That the three employees are subordinates of the council. So it shouldn't take a supermajority to have one of them terminated. I, essentially that's what you're saying, right? If I understand correctly.
Correct. I'm not saying that's right, but the, I'm, I'm, I'm listening to the discussion. Yes, correct.
I guess, I, and I'm defending our old city manager. I, I wasn't involved in city government at that time. I don't know if she's doing a good job or a bad job. It just seemed like a very sudden decision that three people got to make. I would, I'm uncomfortable with it. I'd like to discuss.
I look forward to the discussion. I, I really do.
I am too.
I got calculator? Yes?
Yes?
Three-fifths, three, three-fifths is higher than two-thirds.
Yeah.
Yes.
So it's harder to get three-fifths than it is to get two-thirds.
Yeah.
So that's why I'm saying, I would love to just keep it at two-thirds, I mean, uh, three-fifths. So four-fifths.
Yeah, is that the discussion we're gonna have now or is that for our next meeting?
We can do it for next meeting, but I want good.
I'd like to, yeah, I'd like, I'd like to put more thought into it. That's just kind of.
Yeah.
I'd like, I'd like to hear some other opinions.
And.
That would be a new charter section because there's not a section in the charter that addresses that currently.
Can I ask a question?
It doesn't remove, we, there's not a part in the charter that we, lets the council remove those?
Though they can, but, but it would just be by majority vote if that, I mean, by.
Not supermajority.
Yeah, three, three-fifths or whatever. Three-fifths would be what, that, that would be required unless you had less than quorum. Unless you just had a quorum of three.
Which, uh, I guess that's probably why that's in here, I guess, I don't. I, again, you know, you're making it very difficult. Again, you've got one guy, and you've seen it. We've, we've had some split councils where three don't like the other two and the other three don't like the other two. And so you're never gonna get anybody.
Well, you can, you can also see though when. And this is kind of being. Down in the weeds. That if somebody realizes somebody may be out of town or not at a council meeting at the point in time. And if there's two of them. They can ramrod anything through at two-thirds a whole lot easier than they can at three-fifths.
True.
Well, again.
On, on big topics, on big topics.
It was as long as the two-thirds language is still in there.
Correct.
Or we go to three-fifths? That settles it. That's me five people there.
Yeah. Maybe not necessarily what we were just talking about, but I look forward to discussing that next meeting.
Did that answer your question?
Yes, it clears, bud.
The other two employees that he does, we're talking, you listed three employees. Do the other two employees, are they, uh, contract employees?
No, they're employees of the council, of the city.
But they are contracted. The city, city attorney, the municipal judge, and the city manager.
So there are contracts that. Show the terms and conditions of their award.
Yes.
Okay.
But. But we're essentially all at-will employees. There may be some, some parameters as to what happens when the termination occurs, but all three of them are at-will.
Okay, that's good one to bring up. Anybody have anything else? Anything from the gallery?
Ready for that motion yet, Jerry?
Yes.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All right, our motion for adjournment, we'll call the roll. Townsend?
Yes.
Shelton?
Yes.
Roper?
Yes.
Ellis?
Yes.
Shelton?
Yes.
I vote yes.
Smith?
Yes.
It's always my favorite sound.